Per the agenda, at one time we were going to go into closed session. There was some talk out and about about not going in closed session unless there's a motion on the floor to go into closed session. Seeing none, we will remain in open session and talk about real estate. Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a real estate issue, but it's hardly worth going in closed session, so I'm perfectly fine doing this today. Now, I've got a special guest here, Mr. Larry Vincent, who brought this upon me. Essentially, what's happened is there's a number of properties, and there's five of them we're going to talk about today, and then another property thereafter. But these five properties have huge tax liens from the city. It's because we've done some kind of remediation there. Most of these, we've torn down a house on. So, we get a huge tax lien on it, and the owners never pay it, and then they fall behind on county taxes as well, and no one would ever buy it for the amount of the lien. And so, Mr. Vincent, I think, would like us to do something with these properties because he's kind of in a bind. I mean, he could sell it, but it would just have the giant lien on it. So, Larry, if I say anything wrong, please jump in and tell me. So, if we could, I'd like, we've got some ideas on what to do with these five properties, and then I've got another, save, I guess, for last, some requests from River City Habitat for Humanity. I believe Laura emailed you all some pictures, so if you have that on your iPad. Number one is 813 Madison, and you can see that is a little sliver of a property.
Bill, do you have that anywhere out there?
I don't know that he can, he can't put it up. He's waving us off.
What's that? Did you have it? Can you send it to him? Or do we need it, or are we good to go?
I don't know. Does everybody have it? Yeah, tax sales props, it was emailed right before the meeting. Be today.
Today.
You should have just got it before this meeting from Laura. Probably the last thing you got from Laura. I can email if, Bill.
Mine's a little smaller.
It's just really, it's not super important. It's just really to give you an idea. It's about a 25-foot wide lot, and it is impossible to build on according to our codes It has a $37,000 lien against it. It's, no one in their right mind is going to buy a little sliver property in between two other properties on this thing. So, what we'd like to do, and what I believe we can do, and I hope, I don't mistake this, Mr. Vincent, but I believe we can purchase the properties for the cost of our lien, and we could request the county to waive their taxes. Their taxes are about $522, so there's, there's huge penalties, little taxes, little lien. Or if we, if the county didn't waive it, we, we could pay the $522. And our plan would be to try to sell those, split that in half and sell it to the property owners next to them, give them a little bit more green space. And that's it on 813 Madison, so I'm going to go to the second one, which is 1005 Capital. That property is, is another oddball sliver, and that is up by the Green Building, I believe, the State Office. And it is also a little sliver property that can't be built on according to our codes. It's just too small. It's got $28,000 worth of liens on it, with $10,000 essentially being ours, and $523 being the county's, and then $17,000 in penalties. Our proposal would be that we try to sell that to the state for whatever they'll give us. I mean, honestly. And just be rid of the thing. 206 Chestnut is, we, I recall tearing the house down on that one, but it's got $72,000 worth of liens on it. That one's an actual lot, at least. But it's got $29,000 worth of our liens on it, and we would like to attempt to sell that to the adjacent owner as well and try to negotiate a sales price on that. 714 Adams is picture number four, if you've got that up. That is a real lot. I say a real lot, a buildable lot is what I should call it. It is a buildable lot. It's got $14,000 worth of our liens on it, and a total of 33, 730. Habitat for Humanity has asked for that property contingent on their ability to get clear title and resolution of sewer issues. I'm not really clear what the sewer issues are exactly, so I'd have to, I do need to follow up on that. And they would like the liens to be forgiven. So, on that one, they're just asking us to give it to them. The advantage on these Habitat houses are that at least you get a house, you start to roll in some taxes over the long term. As with any Habitat house, sometimes they start with asking you to give it to them and then come back with an actual offer. 606 Roland is picture number five, and this is the best of the lots for sure. It's only got $3,000 worth of our liens on it. It's 464 in the county for a total of 5930. I would propose that we would try to buy that property, and we probably would have to pay for that one because the plan I'm about to tell you is that we, we actually try to sell that lot. So, we list it with a Realtor. It's, it's actually a decent lot, a buildable area at a location that still has some growth to it. There's still some open lots, so that's actually a legitimate potential lot. Then we go back to 720, you know, I need to back up. Yep. 720 Clark. You'll recall, we had a previous closed session about this. Previously, Habitat offered us $1,000 for this lot. The, no, I'm sorry. Habitat asked us to give them this lot. The adjacent property owner offered $1,000 for the lot. At that time, the council decided not to take action, and maybe reading into it felt like the green space was worth more than that. Habitat is very interested in that lot, and they've come back for a $5,000 offer. And I know there was some discussion at council level, or some councilmen were talking about seeing if some adjacent property owners were interested as well, and I haven't heard anything more on that. The Habitat's, again, very interested in it. They've got a paralyzed individual for which they would like to build a home, and so they, though that was the right spot for whatever reason. So, that's the one I would imagine would garner the most council discussion because there was some discussion about that before. And then one other note is 8, I'm sorry, that's 7, I received a letter from Dan Cobb offering $8,000 for the lot at 814 Adams if the lateral line of the property must be connected to the sanitary sewer main, so there's some problem on that. However, I think they wrote me back and said 714 Adams is actually what, what they wanted. So, so, going back, 714 Adams, Habitat would like it to be donated, and Dan Cobb would like to pay $8,000 for it. He's the, he's adjacent property owner, I believe, contingent on us fixing a lateral line, so I'm not sure what all that, I haven't gotten any deeper into that to find out if that eats up the whole entire $8,000. So, that's kind of a general idea. There's, there's these five, what, six, six properties that are just relatively small and sitting around and not doing anything, and we'd like to make some progress on it. If I could, Mr. Mayor, I guess I'd ask Mr. Vincent if I said things correctly or if you had a different take on it.
No, for the, for the most part, everything you said is correct. What statutes do is after we offer for sale three times, after we offer for sale three times, the collector's actually allowed to sell them over the counter, is what they, they call it. Cole County has never done that, but because of these properties have been, so offered more than, than three times. Because these properties have been offered more than three times.
Sounds like it's on now.
Are you good to go?
Because they've been offered more than three times, several times, some of them several times more than three times, I actually have the authority to sell them over the counter, and I can sell them for whatever I want to sell them for. And a collector's deed, if I issue a collector's deed on it, it actually extinguishes your all's lien. It extinguishes the, any mortgage holders lien or, or any type of lien except for a federal lien. Rather than do that, I thought that the best thing to do is contact the city first and see if they had interest in those lots. We, we did the same thing with the county. County has had two lots that would not sell because of large county liens. The county's already purchased the one, and they did that by abating the lien, which in your case, you'd have to probably do an ordinance to abate the lien, wipe out the lien. Then the county paid the base taxes on the property without any penalties and interest. That way, the taxing jurisdictions in the county all got at least their, what they would have gotten if the taxes had been paid in a timely manner. And that's initially what I proposed to Nathan. And then the Habitat came into the issue also. After looking at the lots, several of them were so small, as he said, 25, 26-foot wide, that, that the, the only thing you can probably do with those is if, if you can see if the neighbors will buy them or, or at least give them to them, or if you had to, or whatever, so that they're back on the tax rolls and bringing back in some income to the city and the school districts and the other taxing entities, rather than them just continuing to sit out there and, and earn more penalties and interest on them. Plus, for us to advertise them every year, we have to have a title, new title search done every year, the cost of running the ad in the paper, and we have to mail certified notices and all kinds of rituals that the state statutes require us to do if you're going to sell a property for back taxes.
Larry, the, when property's sold on the courthouse step, the owner has a period of time that they can come and redeem that property, is my understanding. That wouldn't apply to this property, would it?
No, not after these, not after the third sale. They have a year for the, a year for the first two times it's offered for sale. The, the third time it's offered for sale, they have 90 days, and anytime after the third time, we can actually sell it and issue a collector's deed right away.
Okay. Any follow-up for Larry? Any other questions for Larry? Drew, are you looking for a particular motion here, sir?
Well, I guess if everything I've sounded good, he can just move to prove, moving on those real estate, but I suspect maybe...
Question, out of what fund?
Oh, that is a good question. Depends if, if, if Mr. Vincent gets the county to waive all the taxes, then it doesn't cost us any out-of-pocket money.
Larry? Always wanted to be in this spot, LV.
The properties all have about, you know, roughly $500 apiece, so it's certainly not big money regardless. But I think we're hopeful that our county friends would take one for the team.
Before, before, before you answer that, I want, I want to point out that there's a challenge from you and some county guys to take on us, the city slickers, and bocce balls, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that was your idea, right?
It was my idea.
So, you're on the record as saying so, okay.
But it's, it's sounding better every minute here, you know, you know, you could forfeit three, you could forfeit three games and get, you're right, I'm not going to go there.
It's been a while since you've been on TV.
I, I don't know. That would, that's something...
And Watson's back there, too, just so you know.
That's something we could certainly talk about. The taxes are rather minimal. Again, I, just my personal feeling is, I'd like to see that the taxing jurisdictions at least get their, the base amount that they would have gotten had the taxes been paid in a timely manner. The majority of all the money owed on them is, is the lien, and then the penalties and interest on the taxes, so, and that accumulates pretty quick. At 18% a year is what, what our interest rate is by state statute. So, that accumulates pretty quick when you put those kind of dollars on it, and it goes unpaid for a few years.
Going back to what fund, Drew?
Well, I was going to say if, my guesstimate is that, that maybe most of these are non-controversial, so maybe I could just propose a motion and say you'd authorize the staff to discuss with Mr. Vincent.
We're talking a total of about $2,600, $2,700 in taxes.
Discuss with Mr. Vincent waiving some or all the taxes, let me see what happens, for 813 Madison, 1005 East Capital, 206 Chestnut, and 606 Roland, and then authorize us to, authorize staff to discuss disposition of the properties we previously stated, which you don't have to put this as part of the motion, but that would be, 813 would be to sell to the next-door neighbor. 1005 would be to sell to the state. 206 would be to sell to the adjacent neighbors, and 606 Roland would be to purchase and post for sale. And then maybe we could take the other two separately.
Is there a motion?
I'm not good at predicting.
I got, I got, I got one in a second, so we're good to go. Okay. Questions?
Right. Now, on a, is that 206, you said something about selling to the adjacent owner?
That was our thought.
Pardon me?
Yes.
If, for example, Habitat for Humanity bought that and built a home, we would have a, a stream of income coming in from, you know, here on out as opposed to just a finite amount?
206, though, is not one that Habitat has asked for.
That is not one?
Right. I'll come to the Habitat houses next. That's why I kind of carved those out.
Okay, okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
I'm generally in support of the motion, but I, I guess the numbers that I've heard, and I didn't write them down, but it sounds like that the offers that are on the table will more than cover the city's costs here, so I guess I would...
Yes, that's true.
Like to see what the council thinks about the idea of maybe amending the motion to the point that we would go ahead and pay enough for the lot to get, you know, minus the city, the tax the city would have collected, so that the taxing jurisdictions go ahead and get their money?
I would say that if we go, if you are interested in selling the Habitat for the $5,000 on a, well, can't see what property that was, 714, 720 Clark, then that would more than cover what we would owe the county, just paying all their, all their lien.
I would offer that amendment, that, that we, that we adjust the selling price to reflect the difference between what is owed here and what the other taxing jurisdictions, so that that's what we end up paying for the lots, is what the other taxing, so that we're not taking the money from the school district or the, or other district. I know it's not much.
No, I was just, I'm not sure. I, I think what you're saying is that we could also include 714 Adams, and then we'd have enough money to pay.
Well, I'm saying, whatever the, the, because you told us that we have offers on the table for these properties, we'll return enough to the city to offset what the city pays for the lots. So, let's see to it that the taxing, other taxing jurisdictions get their money that they would have coming from this. And, and I would offer that that's what, rather than the county waiving 100% of the, the amount, and I don't know if that requires a motion or if you can just do that, but I would move that amendment.
If I could just make sure I'm, I'm being good and clear. We have two offers on the table, one for 714 Adams and one for 720 Clark. The others don't have offers, we're just looking at ways to dispose them.
I'm saying there's enough revenue collectively from those two to, to pay for the other lots as well, is what, is what I'm saying. I'm not saying they have to stand alone.
And the only reason I carved them out is because I thought there might be more discussion about 720 Clark and 714 Adams.
And I know there is some, some discussion about retaining the Clark property as green space, and, and so that might alter this whole...
Do you want to change your motion? Your original motion?
The motion's been made and seconded, but, but I'm just...
I know, but I'm just, I'm just asking that, trying to use a...
I would like the council to do what they would like in the motion maker. It's fine with me to include those properties, I just assume there would be more debate.
Okay. Do you want to change your motion to do that, or?
Should probably ask the motion maker.
Okay. Who was our first?
Amendment or the motion?
Well, I'm talking about if we can change, if we can change the original motion to include this and just be done with it.
What?
Or, we have a, actually, we can talk about the motion, or we can talk about the amendment, which is your amendment.
I'm just...
You're obviously the first. The second is, I thought I heard a second on this side. Mr. Schulte? All right. There's a motion on the floor to amend, or there's an amendment on the floor, discussion. Ralph?
Could I hear that amendment again, please?
Yeah, well, I'm not exactly sure what it is. Somebody may have to word it for me.
I wouldn't either.
Here's, here's my amendment. I, I want to amend the motion that, that, to read that the city will pay to the county the, for the, for each lot, the amount of the taxes that would normally have been collected by the other taxing entities. School district, et cetera.
Okay, and there's a second, so, discussion. Ralph?
Is the, and what properties are we talking about? What property is in the main motion here? What properties?
That might be where the motion gets a little bit sketchier, only because in the original motion, we only included 813 Madison, 100, 1005 East Capital, 206 Chestnut, and 606 Roland.
Okay. That sounds...
So, so then, let me restate my motion. I incorrectly stated it. I would like to amend the motion to include the Clark Avenue property, and what was the other one?
714 Adams.
Seven, and 714 Adams, so that includes all, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7 properties, and that the amount paid for those properties be the amount, if it can be negotiated, the amount that the other taxing jurisdictions would receive in tax revenue from the, for the years that are here.
Discussion. I'm assuming the second still goes with that. Ralph?
I'm sorry that, to Clark, that, what is it? At 718, 720, I'm sorry that 720 Clark got wrapped up in this. The, the, at least one of the neighbors there has a strong interest in, in acquiring that lot, and I think it would be a mistake not to pass that lot on to that neighbor or the two neighbors on either side of it as well. Of all these locations in the city, I would suggest that the 820 Clark is among the most, is located in one of the most vulnerable neighborhoods, and I believe that the green space would be of greatest benefit to that neighborhood. So, I would like to discuss the 820 Clark separately, so we can speak about, excuse me, 720 Clark, so that we can just recognize and discuss the, the unique characteristics of that lot and the neighborhood in which it is. I think it's very important that we try to do the best thing for that neighborhood and, and selling that lot for more development and maintaining the density in that fragile neighborhood. We would not be doing those folks any favors at all.
So, you'd be speaking against the motion, or the amendment?
I sure will.
Okay. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I have a question to kind of address Councilman Bray's point. We're adding them in to 720 Clark, does that property have any issues on taxes right now or any liens? I mean, we're, I guess I'm confused, like, is this motion, the amendment and the, and the motion back here authoring, authorizing us to go ahead and move forward and sell it to a developer? Or Ralph's point about wanting to offer it up, I think, and sell it to the adjoining properties, that's still an option on the table? Am I correct in that? I guess I'm jumbled up with everything we've kind of, I'm sorry.
The 720 Clark is slightly different because we just straight on that. It is somewhat different than the rest of the properties.
So, the current amendment, if, if passed back on the main motion, what specifically are we saying you should do with 720 Clark?
The main motion would not address it. The amendment would include it.
And what, it's, what's, it's included in here for what purpose?
I believe, as it was stated, it's for the purpose of paying for the rest of the properties. We would use those funds.
There's an offer by Habitat for Humanity of $5,000 for that lot, and that $5,000 plus, what was there, you say $8,000 for the other lot?
For 714 Adams, although there's some weird stuff on that.
I guess my point, if we attach your amendment to the main motion, pass the main motion, have we sold the property now to Habitat for Humanity? Or are you just including it to say we would use the proceeds from that sale to pay for the taxes, and we still have to make a determination on the sale of the property?
There, there, there's nothing about this motion that would sell that property.
Okay. I, I just wanted to clarify that, because I, Ralph's point, I think, is a valid one, and I, including it still in here just says that we're going to make some proceeds off this property, and therefore, and I would assume that even if we offered it up to one of the two adjoining properties, we would still create some revenue from that sale that could pay for the taxes.
The discussion, the discussion made reference to the fact that that money would cover the cost of those lots, but the motion itself only made reference to the, paying the cost of the, the taxes to the taxing entities. If the council at some future point decides that they don't want to sell the lots for anything at all, all we've done is pay the, the taxes to those entities, and, and the council will be out that amount of money. I think Drew said about $2,600, and some of that money is owed to us as tax revenue to us, to ourselves anyway. So, the, the net cost to the city would be even less than that. I, I'm just trying to say that it seems a little presumptuous to me for the city to ask for other entities' taxes to be waived so that we can acquire those lots. So, I'm saying, let's make them whole, get them their money, and then we'll worry about whether we can cover it through the sale of these lots or not.
Janice McMillan had her hand up. Janice?
I don't mean to muddy the water, but I just want to point out that, that the properties on the, excluding 720 Clark, the city has over $70,000 in abatement expenses on those properties, and that's due to maintenance and tearing down the buildings that were on those properties over the years. So, I would encourage you to get back some of that money. I don't have any objection to the school district and the library district getting their, their taxes, for example, but if the county wanted to waive the taxes, if the city waived their taxes, you know, that, that might be a consideration. But I'd also encourage you to try to get some, some money where there's money available, people are, if they're marketable lots, allow staff the opportunity to try to get some money back for, for the money that the city has already spent on these properties over the years.
Bob?
I, I would agree with that, and that's why I don't feel bad about accepting an $8,000 offer for a lot that we didn't pay that much for, or $5,000 for a, a lot, because you are recovering some of that abated money. And, and you're obviously not going to recover at all, but I do think we ought to recover as much as we can, and, you know, maybe the, the amendment took away some of the flexibility you have. Maybe the amendment's not necessary because the original amendment said you would negotiate anyway, so that's why I ask if we really need an amendment for this, or if, if it's just, all you need is direction from the council that we're willing to pay those taxes, but go try to negotiate as hard as you can with Mr. Vincent.
With that being said, Drew, do you, what the amendment says, was that going to be your spirit from the council, anyway, so to speak?
I think the amendment did not do what I originally thought, but that doesn't mean that's not the right way to go. If I could go out on a limb here and say, maybe this motion might work for you, what if we authorize city staff?
Now, you know there's a motion on the floor. You're just explaining what your next motion could be.
Yeah.
Okay. Hate to, hate to get the attorney in trouble.
A point of order, maybe? Hussy?
Can I interrupt for just a, would, would it just be easier to start fresh?
Yes, yes, it would.
Well, that's what we're trying to do here. Bob, do you, Bob, do you pull? He's out. Second's out. All right. First, where's my first here?
I'll pull out, or pull the motion.
Here's the second, of the original motion. All right. Now, back to the beginning.
Okay.
Which was about 709.
Bets is already yelling at me. Okay, how about...
Mr. Hilbert, you have the floor.
Well, I, we've got some properties now. How about this? This, I think, reflects what Councilman Scrivener's looking for without going on to the property that Councilman Bray is concerned about. If you would allow us, authorize staff to obtain from the county 714 Adams and to sell that property for $8,000 to Mr. Cobb, and if that, if that sale is made, then to use those funds to purchase 813 Madison, and then to sell that property to the neighbor, 1005 East Capital, and then to sell that property to the state, 206 Chestnut, and then to sell that property to, yes, adjacent owners, thank you, and then to purchase 606 Roland and sell that property on the open market. So, that was... So that would be the end of the motion. That would allow, i- if we can consummate the sale for the, uh, uh, eight thousand dollars, then we have enough to buy these other properties and then sell those. It would not then touch seven twenty Clark, which we could then deal with next.
Ken, is there, is there a motion? Bob? Do you accept that as a motion? Looking for a mo-, for someone to make that motion?
Sure, I'll, I'll make that motion for just.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Look at Henry, all right.
Yeah.
All right, discussion.
The, the only problem I have with that, by specifying that eight thousand dollars within this motion, you probably are gonna harden Mr. Vincent's position in, uh, in, in regard to county taxes.
I think that's out the window, but I don't know.
Not Larry. Ken, did you have something else? I'm sorry. Okay, anyone else? Going down, uh, third base, first base, discussion, seeing none, debate. Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Mr. Hilbert, did you have something else?
The only thing left I have is that we do have the offer on the table from Habitat on seven twenty Clark for the five thousand dollars. And, uh, I guess I'm interested to know if we wanna sell that or not. I guess.
Mr. Bray?
Uh, after we, a few weeks ago, I asked Drew if it would be a, if I may, and if it would be appropriate for me to talk to the neighbors on either side of seven twenty Clark. Uh, we had talked about that property in closed session. And I wanted to make sure I was not speaking out of school, so I talked to Drew about, uh, if it would be appropriate for me to approach the neighbors on either side, seven eighteen and seven twenty-two. And, and he's, he said that, uh, that would be okay. So I talked to, uh, the owner, the, at, at seven eighteen Clark. That is about the only frame house in the neighborhood right there. And it is owner occupied. And, and the owner is, uh, takes in, uh, foster children for, I, I believe, a, an, an agency. And she has lived there for quite a while, and, and, uh, she plans to live there a lot longer. And, uh, she, she would, she was, she's very anxious about the possibility of, uh, maybe, uh, getting a piece, or of seven, the empty lot next door to her at seven twenty, and perhaps all of it. On the other side of seven twenty, I talked to the family that has that house, and it is a rental house. And, uh, that owner of the rental house, uh, indicated that, uh, he was not interested in half of that lot and sharing the other half, you know, sharing that lot with seven eighteen. He was concerned about the additional mowing that it would require. I don't know if, I did not go into details, I, I, I knew that the seven twenty was a candidate for Habitat and was on their radar. I did not tell, I don't know that I told either neighbor that. But the fella, that the owner of the rental house, I don't know if he would change, that, if, I don't know if he would change his feeling about the need for mowing if he knew that there would be a Habitat house next door to his, uh, investment property. He may decide that he was interested in half of that property, half of the empty lot. I think what I would like, what I would like us to do is, uh, to go through a more formal process, and I, I think this, I believe this has been, uh, a process that was recently completed on McCarty Street, whereby the city sent a letter to the neighbors on each side of the property, and it's asked if they had an interest in acquiring that property. And I, I would ask that we, uh, take that next step and formally contact the two neighbors on either side, and, uh, confirm their interest in the empty lot between them. And also, I feel, the reason I've, I do feel strongly about this, because, uh, uh, there are some fragile neighborhoods in that general area. And in fact, we're, uh, 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 there's some reinvestment going on in that area, and I, I, I talked today with Norm Robinson, I believe he's the chairman of Habitat for Humanity. And, uh, Norm and I, and, and he explained what his interest, of his interest in eight, in seven twenty, uh, Clark. And I, I listened to all of that, and Norm, uh, Norm and I can talk very easily with each other, and, and we did. Uh, we have actually known each other since the nineteen sixties. So we, we, uh, shared some, a couple of stories and had a very easy conversation. And after he explained Habitat's interest in that property, uh, and, and he had everything he had to say, it was only then that I explained to him that in fact, I, I had already expressed my interest in creating the green space there in the interest of that neighborhood. And I explained to him that, that, uh, uh, other communities that are trying to, uh, help vitalize distressed old neighborhoods have found that the occasional green space in those neighborhoods actually adds to the appeal because it makes it, uh, uh, less dense and more livable. Also, Clark is a major entrance into the East End. And I, I, I can't, the, the, the traffic countess would have to be one of the highest on the East End. And I think maintaining compatible architecture we be in, would be important, uh, at, in that, at the entrance to that area of the East End, especially since that area is gonna serve as the entrance to the soon-to-be Morrell Drive, uh, National Register Historic District. So, but, the, and I'm afraid that if that lot gets developed and a house gets put on it, we're gonna, it would recreate the density. And I'm afraid that the new construction that would go there would not be compatible new design. And when you're working in an old neighborhood, uh, the number one rule, if you're gonna be a nice neighbor, is to build compatible new design so that you fit in nicely. And, but because the houses that, uh, in that immediate area there, I say the house on one side is framed, but the other houses in that area right there are, uh, brick and stone. And I'm concerned that if we allowed new construction there, uh, we would be harming that neighborhood, and I don't think there's a need to do that. I think we can better improve the neighborhood and that area there if we, uh, uh, do our best to try to create green space. So, I think that, I would like to take the next step of, of the city, uh, sending a, uh, a letter to the neighbors on each side to confirm their interest in acquiring that property. And, and I, and I know that one neighbor is anxious to have half of it or all of it. Uh, the, the neighbor that has lived there for a while and plans to live there a lot longer, that takes in the foster children. And, and I also believe that the, the person that has the investment property, the rental property, I, I, I think I'd, if, if he gets that letter, then that would give me an opportunity to talk to him again to make sure he understands, uh, the big picture going on. So I would ask the council's, uh, cooperation and, in, uh, uh, talking to the neighbors on either side, but with a formal, uh, uh, correspondence with a letter to, to, uh, ask about their interest.
Drew, do you need a official motion to do that, or unless anyone would ha, would have a problem? I think staff could obviously reach out and do that on their own, since you're looking at two properties on both sides.
Yeah, the way, there's two processes in the code. One is, is that process, which we clear surplus, and it may have already been cleared surplus, so we might already be there, I think we have been. So then we could, we, code says you have to offer it to either side. And then there's the other deal in the code, says, well, if somebody makes you an offer, it has to come to the council, and you have to decide it. I would be glad to do that, uh, which I guess, again, if there's no action, then I would just take it that the council's not accepting the, uh, offer of the, uh, Habitat, so then we would move forward then with sending it to, uh, the adjacent property owners.
I need to follow up on that.
Yes, sir.
I, I'm sorry, I should, I, I went on for a while, I, maybe I, I had to take, catch my breath. Uh, in my conversation with Norm Robinson today, uh, after he got done explaining his interest, you know, the Habitat's interest in that property, and I explained, uh, um, uh, uh, my thoughts on that property also. Uh, Norm, uh, Norm agreed that, uh, that, uh, that I, I'd hate to put words in his mouth, but I believe he is comfortable with, uh, whatever outcome. I, I, actually, I believe, I can say that Norm said he was happy, would be happy with whatever out, with either outcome.
Bob?
Does the, the city already owns this property, correct? Okay, and Janice, you made mention earlier about the, um, cost that the city has incurred. Do you know what the costs are, uh, that the city has incurred, uh, with that property so far in terms of, uh, back taxes and?
No, I don't. Um, that acquisition was several years ago, um, so, I don't, I don't know what the cost was, but we did tear the house down, the house that was there.
So we do have some balance against that lot of some kind?
There was, until, you know, when the city acquired it, of course, that, that goes away, but, uh.
And do you know what the property values, uh, the, the, and generally in that area, about what those homes would sell for if they were, uh, to sell today? You have any idea?
Uh, there's a little bit of a range, um, I don't know exactly, forty, fifty, sixties. Yeah, probably in that range.
Okay, uh, I, I also spoke to Norm, uh, and he said that they typically, the houses that the Habitat builds are somewhere in the seventy-five, seventy to seventy-five thousand dollar range. And I guess I'd be curious, uh, you, you said that, uh, if the neighbors knew that it was a Habitat house, is, you, you said that in a way that made me wonder, is there something about a Habitat house that is inferior?
No, not inferior, but I, I can explain that. Habitat does a mighty fine job. They have, uh, a good mission, and, and they're very successful at, uh, I think, you know, they've, they've built many Habitat homes around town. But we're talking about a historic neighborhood with, uh, its own charm and character, with the characteristics that define it. And I, I think if you, if you had a streetscape of Habitat homes, it would be a nice area. And, and just around the corner down there, just, just down around the corner from where we're talking about, there are several Habitat homes, and, and they're right in a row, and they're across the street from each other. And they work out all right there, although they're all bunched up together because they're on those small lots that, that we find on the East End a lot. However, if you step, if you get one of those homes, and, and I, and I stated this, these thoughts at, at, uh, the, uh, Old Town Revitalization Company also. And, and, and they explained to me that it, it costs more money on a Habitat home to put brick on it. Uh, but they do, but, but sometimes they do put brick on the front, but it's, it's a, it's a, you know, a, a brick that's just as wide as this, you know, they're, they're small homes, so it's just a little bit of brick this way, and then brick up to the first floor, and then the vinyl siding around the sign, around the side. And in, in these, in, in the old historic neighborhoods, the, with, with stone and brick and porches and charm and character, the two don't, in my mind, in my eye, uh, the two don't always go together. And right there, the, you know, the entrance to the East End, I, I think there might be a better place, you know, to build more Habitat homes, uh, uh, as of, and not right there. I think it's important to be sensitive, and, and I know we all wanna be sensitive, but be sensitive to the existing architecture that's in place. And those, and, and those houses that, you know, in the area there, they are, they are maintained. Uh, well, now, the, the empty lot we're talking about, uh, was not maintained, and, and they, they, they had a lot of cats in there, didn't they, Janice?
The prior owner of the house, yes, it was.
Uh, uh, so that particular house there was not maintained. Uh, and it fell into disrepair, and, and also with all the cats in there, there, I don't think there was an option. So I, I think it's more, I think we need to recognize that there's, there's more than profit here for the city on this to, to offset other expenses. I think it's a, I think there's a bigger question than what can we get out of this lot. I think the, and especially for no more money than what we're talking about, I think the bigger question is, what would be in the best interest of that neighborhood and that streetscape? And I, and I think the green space would be in the best interest.
Drew, I'm wondering this, I wonder if it'd be better for you to negotiate with both landowners and then come back with us after that, so we can make up, uh,
That's what I was.
a more well-rounded decision.
What I was thinking, I could talk to the.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Anything's fine with that? On to the left?
Would like for part of the, uh, equation to at least be the, uh, some calculation of what the, uh, lost revenue to the city, the county, the school district, and the library would be creating that as a, a green space. And, you know, I know green spaces are desirable, I understand that, but you can make a decision that every time a lot, uh, becomes vacant in the community, you're gonna turn it into a green space, uh, then, you know, we'd have a lot more desirable city, I guess. But there comes a point in time where is that a losing proposition? I don't know.
Drew, any more guidance at all you need from us tonight under real estate?
Nope.
If not, go ahead.
Uh, Drew, just real quick, uh, the price tag that we're looking at selling the, the seven twenty Clark to Habitat, what was that price again?
They offered five thousand dollars.
They offered five thousand, okay.
And I'll ca, I'll talk to the, the adjacent property owners, bring back both to y'all to decide it at a later time.
Ralph? Did you have a comment, Ralph?
I moved to adjourn.
Is there a second? That's been moved and seconded, all in favor of adjourning, please say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion passes, are now adjourned.